The July 12th, 2022 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first, and we will leave a legacy of success. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please remove their hats, turn off their electronic devices, or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to 30 minutes will be provided for individuals to address the Board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the School Board only. Presentations to the Board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the Board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the Board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the Board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the Board Clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Mr. Don Browning, District 2.
Here.
Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Throhwa, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5. Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Greg Davis, Communications Manager, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us into place tonight.
Good afternoon, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Attorney Powers, Dr. Gullett, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. Today is July 12th. It is the second Tuesday of the month, and that is a special occasion because today is Cow Appreciation Day. So, Cow Appreciation Day, or as Chick-fil-A likes to call it, their annual tradition since 2005, the holiday in question is designed to raise awareness and appreciation for cows. But, knowing Chick-fil-A, they up the ante, and they've made it an annual tradition where you can dress up as a cow, or as I remember in college, taking a plain white t-shirt and marking it up with a Sharpie so you can get a free entree. Unfortunately, while the Cow Appreciation Day has been postponed due to the effects of the pandemic, we still wanted to make sure that we took the time to show appreciation to one of our loyal business partners, led by owner and operator Debbie McTell, who is with us tonight. The Paddock Mall Chick-fil-A works with the Public Education Foundation and sponsors Shady Hill Elementary as their business partner while also working closely with Vanguard's athletics program. Additionally, they are a partner for our upcoming Back to School Community Give Back event that is July 30th of this month. While I can go down a list of their contributions, one of the most important for us as a school district is that they currently have 19 team members currently employed who are MCPS students, providing opportunities, mentorship, and work experience. That is why it is my honor to introduce Trey Parker, who is a recent graduate from Vanguard High School and who is going to Florida A&amp;M on a track scholarship, Jasmine Conde and J.D. Perez from Forest High School, and for our student inspiration to speak on how working at Chick-fil-A has made them better prepared for their current academics, college, and life after school.
Please stand with me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cleveland Parker. I'm a recent graduate of the class of 2022 from Vanguard High School. I graduated with a 3.4 GPA, and working at Chick-fil-A has taught me, it's taught me many responsibilities, and school always came first with Ms. Debbie and my staff members at Chick-fil-A, whether it was just coming home from practice, schoolwork, everything, education came first, and they work around your schedule, and I just want to thank her for that. But, with responsibility, two years ago, I wouldn't be the person I am. With me starting at Chick-fil-A two years ago, it helped me become a better person because I honestly can say I would not be standing right here two years ago. But, I just want to thank Ms. Debbie for the opportunity, and being at Chick-fil-A has taught me hard work because you can't get nowhere in life without that. And education always came first, even with me in athletics, playing football in track and field. I know when I go to college, just because I may be going on a track and field scholarship, my education will always come first, and I want to thank the Marion County School Board because growing up in this school board has been really good to me. Thank you.
I'm Jasmine Conde, and I attend Forest High School going into my junior year. One reason I like working at Chick-fil-A during school is because it keeps me active and entertained, especially since I'm not a sporty person. Another reason is it helps my time management skills and helps me prioritize certain things and improves my responsibility awareness. Not only has Chick-fil-A improved my financial well-being during school, it has shown me that there are ways to communicate with people of various ages and different mindsets. I feel like working at Chick-fil-A has taught me how to be in a team-working environment as well as doing things that only require working by myself, and has taught me to be a better me and what it's like to have real-life experiences outside of the schooling environment. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm J.D. Perez, and I'm going into my junior year at Forest High School. Working at Chick-fil-A has made me a better student because it's taught me a lot about teamwork and patience, which are both needed while in school. I have learned how to be more patient and understanding while working as a team. While at Chick-fil-A, I have gotten more comfortable speaking in front of others and to other people. Working at Chick-fil-A has helped my academic and professional development by furthering my hands-on learning. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you all for allowing us to be part of your meeting tonight. We are blessed to be part of the Marion County community, and it is our goal as Chick-fil-A at Paddock Mall to actually care for the community through craveable food and remarkable experience, and that is our goal and that is our desire. I think our team members spoke very well about how working has been a great experience for them. We also want to make sure that we incorporate the ease in our learning process, and so employment is a big part of that, as well as Mr. Cal has come to say hello tonight as well. The ease of learning and employment as well as education. And just recently, we have partnered with Point University, which is an online school, accredited school in Georgia, where any of our team members are, have free tuition to complete their bachelor's, master's, or doctorate degrees, as long as they are a team member within Chick-fil-A Paddock Mall, then they have free tuition to be able to further their education as well. So, you guys each have a box, and there should be plenty to share around, but we hope that this leaves you a little sweet treat for tonight. Thank you.
Wait, 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 wait.
I feel like we should be standing.
Come on up, come on up, come on up.
Come on up, come on up.
Make sure Kev get the pictures and stuff. Are we going down to take pictures with these?
Yeah, can we come down? Sure.
Listen, we truly thank Ms. McTell and the Chick-fil-A family for investing in these kids, and then to hear that you have a program for them to get free college if they decide to go to that college, that's wonderful. So, again, thank you, another wonderful community business partner that we have with our school district, so thanks again. Sheriff Woods, where's my friend? There he is. Okay, there he is. I heard him say, "Whoa."
You still have chairs up here.
Yes, sir. Please introduce the newest K-9 to the Marion County Sheriff's Office.
That's what we're gonna do here. First of all, I want to say thank you for allowing me to be here in front of y'all. You know, in these times, it's important, I know it's important to you, and it's important to me, the security in which we have for our students here in Marion County. And you guys always step up to the plate. I'm proud to call you friends, I'm proud to work with you of what we do to keep our kids safe, especially what's going around this nation, on school campuses, and the hard work for everybody. So, well, who we have here today is K-9 Albi, and of course Deputy Eric DeAngelis. Now, Albi is a German short-haired pointer, and she's two years old. She is a firearms detection canine for us. Now, this is a new program, and I will tell you that I am not the first to have this program. But however, I did see that there was a need, and there is a purpose of having her. Now, our intent is to have two dogs. Currently, now, we get our dogs, the company which we use, Dan, out of Daytona, is that correct?
Yes, New Smyrna.
New Smyrna area, Daytona area, but the dogs in which they come from overseas, from Hungary and a couple of the others. Now, obviously, we know of the world events that's going over there, the dogs are scarce and for us to get. We've had a couple that we've had to turn back because they just didn't perform to the standards in which we expect. So, we're sitting at one, and Albi and Deputy DeAngelis completed their training on July 1st of this year, 160 hours of firearm detection. Albi has been certified in room searches, vehicles, and luggage, and she will be continuing her training in firearms detections on persons. Now, there's some legal obstacles that we've got to get beyond before we can actually do that, but right now, she is quite capable of doing those things. She can detect five specific things. First, obviously firearms. Second, post-blast residue after a firearm has been fired and smokeless powder. Three, ammunition itself. Four, casing after the ammunition has been fired. And then lastly, gun oils and lubes as well, and that's what she detects on. My hopes, Board Members and Mr. Chair, is that she will be a deterrent. I hope Albi doesn't find a single one on any one of our campuses, to be frank with you. And I hope she's a deterrent. I hope she's a message to the fools out here that want to think that they want to come on our campuses with guns, whether they be juveniles or whether they be adults. But we deter them away and keep them off the campuses so we can keep every single one of our students safe. I know it's your goal, I think you know clearly that it's my goal, and that's what I'm here to promise you that I will do every single day. Now, she is, she, Albi and Deputy DeAngelis is basically going to be a rover, and they will be assigned a particular day to a school, or if there's a call or a need from a principal, the principal can just call us, the superintendent can call me for a particular location, that can be worked out, and we will have her and Deputy DeAngelis there. And I know that the demand is going to be great, and that's why I'm hoping the second dog comes soon, and then hopefully, in the future, you know, as we grow as a county, one of the biggest things that we have is our population growth. I know your challenges are great, just like mine are right now, and in staffing. And with this population growth, our schools are gonna grow, so the demand of more of these K-9 units are gonna be necessary, and having them so that we do keep them safe. Albi is friendly, if you ain't figured that out yet. She loves people, she loves to work, and I think that the students will just fall in love with her. I know one person has already asked to take her home, Superintendent, but Albi's gotta stay with us for a little while to keep them safe. Now, what we're about to do is Albi is going to give you a demonstration, and what you have in front of you, we set up simulating in a school setting, basically chairs with their backpacks on the backs of the chairs, and she's gonna give you a little demonstration, so I'm gonna turn it over to Deputy DeAngelis.
Wow.
Good girl, good girl.
Wow. It's amazing.
Now, I'm gonna have the sergeant take out what is in the backpack so everybody can see. Now, obviously, we, the humans, knew where it was, but Albi did not. It is a firearm, and that's exactly what she detected on, and that's what she's going to keep off of our campuses. Because I do not want the Forrest incident to happen again, and by God's willing and Good Lord's will, we'll be there every single day and every time to prevent it. So, you got any questions of me?
When's the next dog coming?
Well, like I said, it's been a struggle because we've had two, is that correct, Captain? We've had two that've come in, but they just didn't cut the mustard in the training, their personalities weren't there, and it's difficult to get them. We're hoping by the end of summer that we get them, and of course, it's 160-hour course, and once that's completed, hopefully, in the beginning of the school year, we'll have the second dog out here and available to each of the schools.
Chairman.
Yes, sir. Yes, Sheriff. You started by thanking us for having you, but I want to thank you for coming down with your people, and I want to thank you for how safe I feel in this county, and as our constitutional officer from county line to county line to county line, you get the job done. I watched you on campaign trail, I've watched you at the Ocala Police Department, and I think you have done a remarkable job. I feel safer, and I think we are all safer, and you're a constitutional guy too. You do it the right way, you follow the law, and you enforce it. So, I thank you, it's our honor that you're here.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Means a lot.
Thank you, Sheriff Woods. Really appreciate your partnership in our schools and all that you're doing to make sure that our kids are safe and our employees are safe. Just for the public, I guess, because this is Marion County Sheriff's Office, and we do have SROs in our schools that are not members of the Sheriff's Department, can we assume that the new K-9 will be available in all of our schools regardless of whether it's in the city or in Dunellen or Bellevue?
Thank you for asking that. That's a very good point, because most citizens don't know, and y'all know it, we have a unified unit, and this is for the citizens out there, and having a unified unit is what's the beauty of being able to do exactly what you've asked me. The unified unit is, the juvenile unit is overseen by my office, the Captain Joyner is over it, but however, is intermingled with the Ocala Police Department and the Bellevue Police Department, and Dunellen doesn't have, but we cover Dunellen area. So, to answer your question specifically, but because it's a unified unit, the dog is available regardless of where the school is, and the fact is, it's Marion County. My jurisdiction doesn't end at a city limits. I take care of everybody, so.
And we know that. I just wanted you to clarify it further.
Yep, no, I appreciate it. A lot of people don't, and they think that, eh, they'll just ignore it, and it's far from the truth, so, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sheriff Woods and the rest of your law enforcement team. Being a huge animal lover myself and a huge child advocate, it's already impressed me that Albi is not only fantastic at what she's hired to do, so to speak, but she's also already made a kid's day at Maplewood Elementary School and helped that child turn their day around. Deputy DeAngelis was sharing that with me earlier before the meeting started, and it's just, it's great for public relations too, for kids to see how helpful and important and safe our law enforcement officers are and that they're gonna take good care of us. So, thank you so much for being part of our team.
You're more than welcome.
And, Sheriff Woods, you know, I'll send you a text every now and then just to tell you, thank you. Thank you guys for what you're doing all the time. There's a lot of things that happen within our schools that's unseen that you guys take care of, so I appreciated you and Chief McQuaid and Hollingsworth from Bellevue and Chief Alkin, I appreciate all that you guys are doing, and this is just another tool that we can use to keep our kids safe on a day-to-day basis so that we don't have another Forrest or anything that's else happening across the country. So, I'm praying that folk are watching this right now.
Exactly.
And it would be a huge deterrent for anybody that's thinking about bringing a gun to school, whether it's a student or a staff member, that it would be a huge deterrent for, or just someone walking in off the street. So, thank you, guys, and we appreciate what you guys do every day, every day, so.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a blessed night now.
You too.
And we'll remove those chairs for you.
And thank you, Albi, for coming. Roof, roof.
Come back anytime.
And again, thank you, Chick-fil-A. Thank you, Ms. McTell.
Sure you grab some cookies, Sheriff.
Thank you. Superintendent.
Thank you. I did try to get Albi to come home with me, but I wasn't allowed. I do have a picture. Good evening, Board. I recommend approval of the agenda for July 12th, 2022, School Board Meeting with the materials in the Board Packet. Those materials distributed to Board Members at the meeting and the audio recording included as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of items C-9.2, C-9.3, C-10.2, C-12.1, C-14.1, C-14.2, and C-18.1 that have been pulled for discussion, and item C-9.1 that has been withdrawn completely from the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, Superintendent. May I have a motion on the Superintendent's recommendation?
Moved.
Moved by Board Member Throhwa.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Ready for vote. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the May 24th, 2022 School Board Meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Board Member Throhwa. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? In discussion, there being none, all signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the June 2nd, 2022 Administrative Briefing and Work Session?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Board Member Throhwa. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? There being none, in discussion. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. I'll now ask the School Board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the School Board on tonight.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the School Board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who might wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on School Board and School District matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forums are also located on the same table. The completed forums were due to the School Board's clerk no later than 5:40 p.m. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the School Board's meeting in the order of receipt by the School Board Clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name and address for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the Board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless the statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The Board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the Board regarding discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the Board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have any speakers tonight?
Yes, Chair, we have two speakers, Mr. Gary White.
Gary White, 9280 Southwest 96 Court Road, here representing It's Your Tea Party, Marion County, Florida. I want to thank Officer Wood and all his people for taking up the banner of protecting our kids in the classroom. That's where we want to start, and that's, that's just great of his organization and his forward-thinking, forward-looking attitude about our county. As has been said, you feel a lot safer in this county knowing Sheriff Wood is our sheriff. I just want to tell you, ask you, to try to understand victims. You are victims. You're victims of procedures, not open to all transparencies and conversations, victims of bureaucracy, and victims of restrictions. I don't want you to be victims. I want you to think forward for coming up with, you are in the time you have left, to break your victim condition, help your future... Help your future board members to allow open discussion, to examine, examine, examine budgets more meaningfully. And touch that child in that chair, in that room, and get him or her out of reading, writing, and arithmetic agenda only, and be sure that all the junk that's going on in this world right now doesn't enter that classroom. And we teach them to continue to think, not indoctrinate them in how to think. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Ms. Nikki Williams.
Nikki who?
Williams.
Williams. Guess Ms. Williams is not here. Okay. All right. May I have a motion to adopt Neola policies?
The adoption of the Neola policies will ensure that the school board will have board policies that reflect board guidance and are in statutory compliance.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wishes to address Neola policies? Is there any discussion tonight?
Did we have a motion? Did we do the motion? Do we have to?
There is.
Go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
Now, I was just asking, did we have to have a motion in a second?
We do not at this phase.
Thank you.
Wanted to outline what it is that we need to do for the public hearing.
Perfect.
Obviously, the board has met on numerous occasions now in order to go through its work sessions and develop these Neola policies. The Neola policies have been provided within a manual which was uploaded to board docs and is ready for final approval. That would replace all of the school board's current policies, with the exception of the following board policies: Legal Counsel Board 2.40, Legal Counsel Duties and Responsibilities 2.401, and the Alcohol and Drug Free Workplace 6.33. Those will be, with the exception of those policies, all current policies will be replaced upon the board's adoption of the same. In addition, there are three policies which were put forth which we're going to withdraw, and that is Policies 1217, 3217, and 4217, as they are subsumed within Policy 7217 and Policy 5772. Those apply to prohibition of weapons on campus. Section 5772 is the policy which will be retained, which speaks to the prohibition on student weapons or firearms. 7217 would remain with one exception, and that would be that we would amend, as per the board's prior discussion, the section of that policy, which I will bring up now. That section of the policy says the exception does not lead, does not apply to adult students or to employees who park their vehicle on property leased, owned, or contracted for by the school board, and we discussed deleting the words "or to employees," such that the prohibition remains on students, but as to employees, they would have the same rights and responsibilities as any other member of the public. So with that being said, those are the policies. How it would work would be that upon adoption by the board of these policies, all other policies existing, with the exception of those three that are noted, would be, would be canceled, would be withdrawn, and the new policies would take effect starting tomorrow.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Any further discussion? I'm sorry?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Browning?
Yes. I, I believe strongly in having policy. I know this has gone, has been going into four, I'm going to say, estimated, a couple of years of work to pull this together. I believe that we need to do more work. And here's my thought process to the board and to the public. Over the process, over the time, and it's been just about the last year that we've worked on this, close, close to a year. And initially, it made sense. It was too large, I thought, too cumbersome, too difficult to, to process well fairly, appropriately, and in a human sense. Yes, I suppose you can get through it, but I, I just think it is too much, too legal, too, too difficult to fairly and constitutionally be applied. And what I've seen, working on the board, what I've seen is like a double standard often. And I don't mean this in a derogatory sense to individuals. I'm saying that I think there's some systemic problems that are associated with what we have built ourselves into with this enormous document. They're around the table, but this is the size of this. You can almost pick it up. You can almost carry it. Now, do we need it? Yes, we do. Is it appropriate? Likely. Is it workable? I have come to the conclusion that no, it is not. I have seen a double standard at the application, in the application of policy. If, I'll give you an example. If policy is going in the direction that the school district wants, this is very useful and it can be very elaborate. Like, for example, the process can be enormous. It can take months. It can be very one-sided, say, prosecuting a child for a, an issue that comes up. Like we were talking last week, a, when do you, must you break away if you're being bullied or beat up? And the policy's in here, and it says that you must not engage. You must, you must get away if you can get away. Well, everybody knows that that may sound good in paper, you know, on a written page, but in actuality, as you, as you live your life, and we've got 44,000 students, as you try to live your life and you're being bullied, if you don't stand up to the bully, say in the locker room, you don't stand up, you run away, where do you get to the playground? Where do you get to the neighborhood? You've got yourself a problem. And we can't put that, the way it's, it's set up right now, it's so black and white. It like, it looks perfect when it's in the book and it's on the page. But I don't think it's implemented that way. And I don't think that it's fair to, yes, sir.
For a suggestion, I think that since that example that you used, you're talking about the student code of conduct. That's not, that's not in policy. That's, we're talking about the student code of conduct.
Well, no.
That hasn't came through yet.
Yeah, I'm, my example, but I'm, I'm referring to the, to the policy. And the, the depth of the policy, when it is so large that it must be implemented from a, like a national organization to pull it together. I believe, now, this is just my belief, that we have, we've gone off the rails. I believe that if we, if we were to adopt this, that included in it would have to be some constitutional protections for every student, for example, for every employee, for example, that there isn't double standards. It isn't interpreted, yes, we have a responsibility, yes, we have a duty, yes, we are going to deal with this in the most severe fashion. And then when it comes in a different fashion, not exactly the way the district is looking for, we have no duty, no standing. Thank you very much. Case closed. So what I'm suggesting at this, at this meeting, what I'm suggesting is that we consider, and I'd like to make a motion that we amend, the motion that's up, to extend into further work with this policy in order to include in it some protections for the student, for the employee, I, I just, for the community. I would like to see that take place. If I have a second, great. Then we can, we can continue with that. I'd like to maintain the floor, if I may. I make that motion.
Is there a second? Is there a second? There being no second, the motion fails.
Motion fails. Okay, thank you, sir. Well, in that case, what I would say is I will, I will maintain my position that if not now, then soon, we adopt a workshop program, extend what we've done in the past to increase fairness to all parties and fairness and constitutional protections so that we protect the district, so that we protect the individuals, so that we maintain a, the best possible policy system we can have. So for that reason, I am not in support of this. I am in support of the general idea, but not going forward without these protections because I see a definite need for those protections. Thank you, Chair.
Attorney Powers, let me, let me back up a second.
Yes, sir.
Because there was already a motion on the floor. Correct?
Yes, sir.
So we need to take care of that motion?
Right.
You see, offer the substitute motion.
Correct.
So are we in compliance or do we need to go back and?
We are currently, yes.
We're in compliance?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What we need to do is, I, I started this as we began, prior to the motion being made, I, I stated the items that we identified that were in need of change. So those should be subsumed into one motion together. So the motion, it was premature to make a motion to start. We opened the public hearing. So at that point, the public hearing goes forward. The motion to adopt the Neola policies really needs to come after the explanation of the, of the specific amendments that, those four that I identified that need to be addressed. And I still have some additional things to place there. However, Board Member Browning's motion can be addressed, and then if it gets a second, we can do that after the, the first section. So what I would propose is that we start off with a motion to adopt Neola policies with, with the following amendments that I would explain to the board. Now, those amendments, there are four, and this is going to be for the purposes of record keeping. I want to make sure that we are clear on those so that, so that all parties know exactly what those are. These are four areas that we identified as errors within the Neola policy updates because of so many, so many staff, Neola, myself, Ms. Brown, everyone working on the same set of policies. And small errors are likely to occur when that happens. The first is as to edit 63620, I'm sorry, 6320, and I've provided you with a copy of that one. If you look at 6320, that is purchasing and contracting for commodities and contractual Page six, fourth paragraph on that page, needs to be updated to change the address of the required public records provision. So before the policy's finalized, we would ask permission to make this change without further board approval. That's number one. Item number two is Policy 6610. Page three, paragraph four, at the top of the page, staff had requested an amendment to include the red font wording, "Any gifts, awards, including scholarships or honoraria to individuals based on the value defined in procedures." Those were submitted by superintendent staff. Somehow, they didn't make it to the final edit. So that is the edit that will be placed, "Based on the value defined in procedures." And before we put the policy in final form, we ask permission to make this change without further board approval. Edit number three would be to withdraw Policies 1217, 3217, and 4217. Those are all duplicate policies of the firearm policy which applies to all. If at some point later we see a need for ease of reference in the employee manual to come back and, and insert those policies, we can do so at any time, given 14 days' notice, of course. And then the final, fourth and final edit would be as to Policy 7217. The board had previously expressed, and this is on, in the manual here, I don't have it printed out or if you're reading along online, bait stamp 832. This is an exception as to the firearms policy that already exists in Florida statute. This is to maintain accuracy within the Florida statute. This exception does not apply to adult students or to employees who park their vehicle on property leased, owned, or contracted for by the board. We would strike the word "or to employees," such that the weapons policy as to 790.25, which permits the carrying of a firearm in a vehicle, that's already allowed by members of the public, that would also disallow it to students and allow it to employees as any other member of the public.
So basically, we're, we have an amendment to this motion, the original motion. The original motion was to, to adopt Neola policies. So the new motion is to adopt Neola policies with the added amendments of Policy 6320, 6610, which are edits, Policy 1217, 3217, and 4217, which are being withdrawn because they're redundant, and then Policy 7217, which is a clarification or edit as well.
That's correct.
So that's the new motion. Okay. So may I have a motion to adopt Neola policies with the necessary amendments in regards to Policy 6320 for edits, 6610 for edits, Policy 1217, 3217, 4217, which are withdrawn, and Policy 7217 for edits? May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member Thora. We've already, is there any further discussion on that? We already had a discussion?
If you don't mind, I would like to address a couple of things that were just mentioned in the previous conversation. One of the notes that was made was that this is too legal. I specifically wrote that down because the comment was made that this is too legal. What our challenge has been for some time and why the school district has been undertaking this long endeavor of working through these policies is because some of our policies within the school district are outdated and frankly, do not align with current Florida statute. Some of our existing policies that the school district has been operating under for years do not currently align with Florida statute. That's why throughout this entire booklet, repeatedly, it references the specific Florida statutes that these policies align with. So to say that this is too legal is actually, I would say, inaccurate or a gross misrepresentation of what the legal system is and how our legislature has or a gross misrepresentation of what the legal system is and how our legislature has written statute. Our role as the school board is to produce policies to align with Florida statute as constitutional officers of the state of Florida and Marion County Public School System. That's our role. Another comment that was made referenced specifically about students' constitutional rights. And I would like to point everyone's attention to policy number 5611, also known as due process rights. That begins with, "The school board recognizes the importance of safeguarding a student's constitutional rights, particularly when subject to the district's disciplinary procedures," and it goes on from there. So to question that our policies that we are about to potentially approve does not include a student's due process rights would actually be inaccurate because we have a policy specifically that we are potentially about to approve that addresses due process rights for students. The final point that I would like to stress is that another comment was made about the implementation of these policies. At this juncture, these policies have not been implemented because they have not been approved. So to be able to tie the implementation of policies in this manual to something that's currently happening in the district is also inaccurate because until we approve this policy manual, our district is not implementing any of them. And in turn, because they're not implementing any of them, some of them that we currently are working off of, again, are not aligned with current Florida statute. That is why it takes a large organization to work with, that we have worked with for several, several months, couple of years, but definitely over the last several months, and had 18 separate meetings, 18 separate public meetings, addressing each one of these individual policies, section by section, policy by policy, line by line at many times. And that's why I am confident that once we are able to approve said policy manual, then the district and district staff will be able to then implement them. And should there ever be an issue that comes, becomes a question that the implementation of said policy is not working in any shape, form, or fashion, all it takes is to bring it back to the school board and for us to take a look at that consideration and to potentially amend a policy once it has been implemented. But at this juncture, there has been no implementation of said policy manual because it hasn't been approved. Hopefully, that's what we're about to do. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, go ahead. Mr. Browning? You're the only one that wanted to say something else.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I was gonna, yes, please. So we have a, we have a policy manual right now. Yes, we have updated it. I say do not, do not throw the baby out with the bathwater. Let's make, let's make these, these inroads. Let's improve the policy. But let's include, and maybe it'll only take one, maybe two, with, with the, these Neola folks present, perhaps we can do it, to my satisfaction. The, my satisfaction is that there are adequate protection, that there's adequate protection in place for the implementation of these policies. If there is adequate protection, yes, we all are constitutional. But are we constitutional? I've watched a number of things go through where there was no protection on the other side, like signing, making statements without parents present, for example. Really a bad idea for anyone, whether it's written down in here or not. Protection of rights is critical. When we bring a student, and this is just real, real, this is just from the heart, Don Browning, you know, been around, been an American for a long time. I really believe that we cannot err if we really pay attention. Maybe another couple of meetings, maybe probably just way at the outside five. But I want to see some real protections so that if a, if a discipline person, a discipline officer, a teacher, a playground proctor, or whatever, however a student is written up, that there's, that there's due process on the other side. I just don't see due process. I see constant situations where I get calls from people and they said, "How did this happen? What is going on?" And we see it nationally. I think we could be a leader in this. The legislature, the governor, the people of the state of Florida give school districts wide latitude, wide latitude to do our job, to establish these policies. Once that's in there, we're big, students are small. I see a lot of problematic applications of school district policy. And I would like to see it written out so that a parent, if they decided to bring their student, and now with the new constitutional, the Supreme Court is, everything is really, really coming to bear right at this moment, where, where you can make a choice, it isn't a trudancy situation. You can make a choice where you want to go to school, where you want to bring your child. And so those funds, we've got to be on our game on this. This isn't like, oh, Board Member Browning's holding this thing up. I'm really not. What I'm saying is it needs some solid addressing of the protections for the other party. I see a lot of protection for policy, "That's it. The school board said it. That's it. The legislature said it. That's it. Congress said it." Well, wait a minute. Hold on just a minute. Not necessarily so. That may be somebody's interpretation. How about we see some real protections written down, just like the prosecutions? And think how, think how exciting that would be for, for any one of us here, any human being, especially a young third grader, a high schooler, where it's going to impact their life. I really now see a gap in the way protections can kind of slide over. And there's an assumption of guilt, and there's an awful lot of, wow. Well, it's, it's, it's what the, what the, the state of Florida Department of Education calls wide latitude for school boards to implement their own policy, to make things legal and right and just in the best, in the best interest of our, of our, of our students. So, and our communities, and our religious people, our, our parents, everybody. Everybody really needs a, and I don't think it'd take a whole lot. I think it'd take a few pages to say, "This is school board policy." That this is what you can expect to protect you on the other side of a massive set of hard rules that almost take all decision-making discretion from, say, a school, high school principal. That in my experience in life, we had, principals had a lot of, a lot of discretion. If, if I had a schoolmate and we had a disagreement out under the jungle gym, it would be handled in a much more simple, sophisticated, and probably effective way that right now it's even been thought of as very likely, if you've been written up enough, if you've shown too much disrespect, whatever in the world that is, too much disrespect, you may be on your way to prison, like from the third grader prison conduit we've discussed many times. So I want to see some, I want to see some energy put in to the protection side. That will make the prosecution side much more valid. And we do have to have a prosecution side, and we have to have a defense side. Then everybody isn't just behaving because they're afraid. They're behaving because it's the right thing, and they have an opportunity to promote their side of the story. So for that reason, I am not in favor of the motion to pass this. And it mostly, it, it's not so much against with what we have, but what we don't have, and that is protection, and, and an opportunity under current thinking to really study that protection and that inclusion of protection for employees, for students, for families, for everyone involved. Thank you, Chair.
May I clarify? So Mr. Browning, would, would you like to, in keeping with your prior motion, would you like to move to amend the motion that's on the floor? Or would you like to vote it up or down and then address an amendment to the policies at a future date?
I, I, I'm happy to, I'm, I'm happy to have it voted up or down. I, I think that it will pass, but I want to open a door to, my dialogue, my purpose is to open a door to progress in the future so that we can build on what we have. That is the key to success, in my estimation, and that is that you, if, when you identify a problem, that you attempt to solve that problem. And I believe that within 20 hours of work, and that's, I'm, I'm just saying maybe three hours or something like that per session, and give, give the board attorney and anybody else at the public that wants to weigh in on this, because there's a lot of people that have been very unhappy and say, "I wouldn't, wouldn't send my student, my child there." I want to open the door to protection on both sides so that you have order in the classroom, everybody benefits because if there's disorder in the, in the classroom, you end up robbing those that came to learn and not disrupt. However, if you're, if, for whatever reason, a due process is thrown out the window and there's a double standard, there must be protection on the other side, and I don't see it. So I would like to see, if this gets passed, that's fine. It's, it's, I'll, I'll just tell the public. I think that it's as clean and it's least cleaned up from what we had maybe over the last, I heard estimates of 10 years, that it has been drifting along and nobody has been addressing it. Now, we have addressed it, and I've worked to address it, and my, my reasoning is in this as well. However, I don't see the other side, and if we could get to the other side, this passes, that's fine. I'm not in favor of it until it's more complete. When it is more complete, I would be very excited to, to vote for it. But the idea of moving ahead with protections that I see are critically necessary. They're just critically necessary. I've watched, I've watched a student and a mother and a, against an enormous cadre of forces, and I don't think that's proper. And so I want to see some of that, I want to see some fairness and balance. And if we have that, certainly, we'll all be better for it. So while I'm not in favor of this, I am in favor of the spirit of it, but I'm not in favor of passing it right now. I'd like to see it more complete before it's passed.
And Board Member Browning, a number of the items that you note are things that we will have an immediate opportunity to address within the Code of Student Conduct, specifically as to fairness and how things are handled within anything regarding student discipline. Because under Florida statute, upon adoption by the board, the Code of Student Conduct becomes a policy of the school board. And so that document is reviewed annually regardless of whether it, there's a need for other policy updates. And it's reviewed via a public committee that's comprised of members of the public, staff. There, there's a number of people on that
Board member.
On that board, a board member. And those, so that, that is up for review and renewal quite soon. So all of that section of what you were discussing, I know that only addresses a portion of what you're discussing, but that will be addressed independently and separately as well. So that if there are any items within the Code of Student Conduct that need to be addressed, those will have an immediate opportunity. Likewise, as to any policy here which, at any point, any board member believes needs additional work or needs additional clarification, those can be directed to staff and brought up at a board meeting. And we can set that for review and update as well. The policies as we have them now will be updated at least, at least once a year for the first couple of years, probably as much as twice a year, based on legislative updates and based on little tweaks that we find along the way of things that need to happen with either federal, state law, or administrative code. So it is a process which consumes, as you know, a lot of the board's time, a lot of my time, a lot of my staff's time in order to find all those, and then also district staff time in order to find what fits our district that may not fit other districts. So this is, although it is a, although all of the, the statutes and codes are sort of given to us in template form by the national companies you're talking about, that is specific to Florida. And then within those things that are specific to Florida, they give us options as to how we would like to perhaps have our template. And then the board discusses each of those to determine, does this fit with what we need? And if it doesn't, how do we keep it legal? How do we keep it legal so that what our interpretation is and what things that we might want to do differently in our district as opposed to, say, Sumter or Alachua or somebody else, how do we make sure that our, our policies are, maintain legality and at the same time reflect the unique character of Marion County? And that is something that staff works on purposefully and that will continue to happen. So this is not a one-and-done process by any means. This is essentially the point at which we have, to put an analogy, if we, we now have the car, we may decide that we don't, that we have punch-out list items and we want, we want the different tires or we want an upgrade option to something else, but anything is modifiable from this point. Unfortunately, it's not modify, it's modifiable without a great deal of, of additional expense. It's, it's modifiable because we need to make modifications to policy just as there are modifications that are frequently made to law and administrative code as well. So your, your points are well taken.
Well, I, and I appreciate that, and I believe we could get there. I believe that with about 20 hours, and here we are in the middle of the summer, 2022, I believe that if we apply ourselves, if, if the board sees, concurs with my argument that we can do better, especially by including some additional protections that I'd be very happy to elaborate on, that it should be a better product. It'll be better for board members, it'll be better for faculty, it'll be better for all staff and students and the community, parents. And what the governor's been pushing, I counted over 20 legislative adoptions that I think will make Florida a leader in will make Florida a leader in the fairness realm, if you will. So protections, couple of weeks, month, I have, I have no problem. Nothing, nothing grand is going to occur, but I would love to see that happen. In the event the board does not see it that way and wants to pass it, that's fine because we can still, as you pointed out, we can still step forward and adopt those items if the board sees, sees fit to do that. So I, I think you're on point with that. I, I see it, I think it'd be a better product. We do have wide latitude to, to do the job that we want to do and protect all. And I think everybody here does want to protect all. And we do want to protect parents, grandparents, caregivers, staff. Right now, if you're on the wrong side of something that's in this manual, there are no protections for you, and I can speak to that. There are no protections. And I think we can, we can get all over this and represent our students, we have 44,000 students. And let's represent, at least that's my position. Let's look at some solid protections. I love what the, what the sheriff had to say about the constitutionality of how he enforces the law. And that's just incredible to me. It means everything, that the least among us is protected. And that if there's going to be big forces come down on someone because they appear to be insubordinate, then perhaps the same forces could be applied if that, if that enforcer was insubordinate, perhaps. And, and how, how does that enforcer get, just because they're 10 years older doesn't really matter to me. I want, I just want to see this protection, because all of us, I just don't think many people realize, there is no protection really for a student and for a staff member, even a board member. There is no protection. There is a wide, wide latitude given to this district. So we've got to pay attention to what we're doing and really pay attention, really pay attention. Don't make it like it's, these kids are in prison. Don't make it like they're in a juvenile detention situation. I want to see some real protections. And if we have that, that will save us from, from like legal pressures that we would have to answer to. So a couple of weeks, a month, two months, I believe we'll be better off if we consider that. And I hope the board sees it that way. I hope the board recognizes what we need to do to protect our students, our staff, and ourselves and our community. I, I hope they do because it's, it's our sacred honor. It's, it's our duty.
Chair, can you address one of those items for Mr. Browning?
I was hoping to have that.
Well, I, I.
Go ahead.
I think for clarification and for the public as well, it's, the, a number of the items that you mentioned of, of the governor, that the governor's signed bills on, those are legislation which is required to be adopted in board policy. And so a good portion of what we have here is specifically as a result of that new legislation. You mentioned the 20-plus pieces of legislation. In addition, we have policies which have been brought up to date to essentially be able to accept a process by which we can place those legislative updates into action. Some of those require adoption by January 1st, and that's going to be our next update, but we have to get through this part first. So a number of the items specifically that you're talking about, with the legislature and the governors having passed these items, those are either incorporated or in the process of being incorporated into the policy that we're, that we're voting to adopt.
Thank you, Attorney Powers.
Yes, sir.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign?
No.
Passes 3-1. For the record, Attorney Powers, correct me if I'm wrong, the passing of this Neola policy does neither cancel out, cut off, restrict, nor remove any current due process procedures or protections. They, those processes of protections always are there.
That's correct. We may have included additional due process procedure, due process procedures, but in fact, I think that the Neola policies, as we've placed them, now they're our policies, I should say.
Correct.
They have additional due process requirements.
Thank you. So for the record, no, no due process protections were removed by the passing of these policies that are now, that were Neola policies but are now Marion County School District policies. So just move forward. Yes, ma'am.
I just have one request, and that is that any of us as board members, now that these policies have been approved, if there is anything that any of us feel needs to be changed or amended, to bring that forward, and we will consider it, but please be specific so we know what to consider. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. May I have a motion to approve considering agenda item C8.1 through C18.1 with the exception of items C9.2, C9.3, C10.2, C12.1, C14.1, C14.2, and C18.1 that have been pulled for discussion and item C9.1 that has been withdrawn completely from the agenda? May I have a motion?
Motion.
Go.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice, by Ms. Thor, Vice Chair Campbell, seconded, any, no discussion. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve grant application 2022-2023 Title II, Part A, supporting effective instruction?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Campbell.
There's three board members here. Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C9.2.
Yes, I did. And 9.1 has been, has been.
Withdrawn completely from the agenda.
Yes, completely. Thank you. Yes. Yes, I pulled this so that we could discuss, so we could, it, it more than meets the criteria of, we've, we've described it many ways in the past, and that is when we polled all the local governments, $100,000. This is a $3 million item, and it's a, it's something that I think it needs to be discussed. Of course, anybody that doesn't care to discuss it, that's fine, but it's so much money and we are trying to have effective instruction. And that's what we're talking about, and even if the superintendent would like to weigh in on this, like why, what we're doing well with it, like it, it, it's been routinely adopted, approved since 2019, 2020, 2021, now we're 2022, and it's in a non-discussion mode. I would like to see it out. I would like to see it discussed and, and effective education, effective instruction, professional learning opportunities. This is what we do for a living, and this is $3 million of it. Wow, it's exciting to me. We're making a request, and when we make a grant application, it's important to understand that there's two parts to a grant. It's the applying and it's the receiving. And so when you do this, you've got to bring it up, you've got to let people know, at least I, this board member from my district, I, people are so grateful that we discuss these things and that we do bring them up. $3 million of items that we've been using for the last three years, four years, 2019. This is the process that I believe we can, we can deal with on a regular basis as board members. And as, as the state of Florida gives us wide latitude, I think we should adopt and use that wide latitude to get the information out to the public so that the public does see these things. And if they go like to board docs and they take a look at it, there is no discussion. It's not there. They can't find it. If people decide, if board members decide not to discuss it, that's one thing, I get that. Choose not to discuss what we actually do for a living, that's, that would be their own call. But this is critical. I'd like to, I'd like on each one, each item like this that comes up, because we're trying to go from the bottom to the top in terms of excellence. Out of, I don't know exactly the numbers, I think it's, we're within 10 of the bottom. And that may be a little generous. And so we want to do the best job we can, and we should be talking about every 100,000, like everybody else, every million, every 2 million, every 3 million. So I would like to know what the board thinks of this, if they've got any ideas, how we can implement better, how we can maybe take some of what we spend and maybe tie it in to our teachers and have our teachers driving the ship in terms of the things we're out there buying. Yes, I want to, I'm, I'm in favor of this, but I also want to hear what the board thinks and what the superintendent thinks about the, how this has helped us in the past and how it could help us more if we took X, Y, Z steps. So before we push this off forward with no discussion for another year, another year, another year, I would like to discuss what's going on with this 3 million plus. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed have the same sign? Pass unanimously. May I have a motion? May I have a motion to approve turnaround leadership pipeline grant 2021-2022?
So move.
Moved by Mr. Browning.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled this item to discuss.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I did. Okay. I like the idea of discussion when we talk about the, the coming, coming from F, from failure, to, to A, success. I've been involved in this over my life. Once we did it down at Stanton, we went from an F to an A+. We also once, I believe it was Governor Bush, it might have been Governor Chris, but we, we picked the worst performing district in what they call turnaround. I like leaving it as F. You know, if you're failing, I like calling it that. Some of these, some of these terms kind of color things so that you don't really realize how bad it is. We took those, we, we took, Gaston County at the time was the worst performing. We just looked around, found, found the worst, worst performing. And we got the sheriff involved, we got the churches involved, and we made some real progress. We got the governor's office involved, made some real progress. And I think we can do that here with any failures. I like to not call them turnarounds, that's sort of presupposing. I, I like to say we go from failing to full success, right here, right now, in the process. And, and I can't, I can't abide things going under, while this doesn't cross the $100,000 level, it's an effort. Maybe we need to double or triple this, because I can't stand failure. I abhor failure. So, board, I'd like to talk about it. Talk about how we turn these around and maybe hear from the superintendent on how we turn these around with these pillars of success, instruction, learning, positive culture, environment, standards-based planning. This is like the essence, I think, of what we do. And we've got to, we've got to bring failures into the, into the main and make them successes. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any, Thor?
Just one clarification, and then I'll be ready to call the question and vote. We currently have one F school, it is a charter school, and that's the only F school that we have. I'm ready to vote.
Ready, ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed have the same sign? Passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve required textbooks and instructional materials?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Browning. Mr. Browning, you pulled this one for discussion as well.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, $350,000 for what we actually do for textbooks on, on a, on a great project. This is some of our top students, the, the accelerated programs, even some go out of the country, like Cambridge type thing, through the, maybe an entryway in with the community college, $350,000. I think it, it bears at least celebrating and not go unnoticed in what I call a bulk vote. So I'm, I'm in favor of this. I would love to hear from the superintendent, I'd love to hear from the board as to any thoughts we have as to how we can champion this, we can do better than we've done. I know we're trying to do it, and this is a chance to talk about it. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed have the same sign? Passes unanimously.
Just a quick comment, Chair, if I may. I didn't get a chance to say it before we voted. I'm, I'm surprised it didn't come to anyone's attention that there's a buyback value received for textbooks that are no longer needed for these dual enrollment courses.
Yes.
So that's just a feather in.
Added incentive.
Yes.
Yeah, that's super. That's, that's exactly the kind of discussion that I think, I think needs to take place. It's just critical. Wow. Buyback.
May I have a motion to approve the disposition of tangible property?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Thor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Browning. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C12.1. You wish to have further discussion?
Yes, we've, we've, this is pretty, pretty routine with the exception of the value. And the idea, I haven't seen this come forward, that we're going to start treating things as used, like we have a real value. This isn't an enormous amount of money, and we have to treat this money, we have to treat all dollars like we're stewards of the dollars. We're all, we're constantly asking for more money, like we're asking for this lien, an ad valorem tax. We've got, what we've gone over, what I've seen that we've gone over in, in, in this would handle maybe 10%. It's so exciting to see opportunities to be better stewards, and I haven't seen much come out. This is a 100 and, 129,000. We can be great stewards, I know we all try to be. We have, we have $127 million that just dropped on us over the next four years because of COVID, and COVID's behind us. And so boom, we've got this money and we've, we've talked about it at a recent workshop. There's so many opportunities to do the right thing. We've got tremendous amounts of money I think we need to talk about and be as good a stewards as we can be. And when we have a used item, we can sell those used items, we can recover that. sell those used items, we can recover that. I don't know. I'm, I'm just making up a number, maybe, maybe half, because there's always someone that it would be an advancement for them, say a used car. Maybe they can't buy a brand new one, but they can, that used car is not junk, long way from it. So I would like to see discussion on this anytime it comes up. Never go into the no discussion bulk agenda. Thank you. Ms. Thor?
Yes, I was very happy to discuss this the first time around to clarify to the community exactly what happens with these objects. And if there are specific suggestions as to what else can be done with those, I'm sure that the folks in that department would be all ears, because from what I see, every single time this comes on the agenda, there's a little category here that says effective action, and it says property will be sold at public auction, that's money, scrap for valuable metals, that's money, traded in for new equipment, that saves us money, donated by board action, which is something we get to decide, or cannibalized for parts. So all income generated through this process is recorded as miscellaneous revenue. So whatever else can be done, instead of, not even an instead, I want specifics. I'm ready to vote.
All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve renewed bid 3778 GM carpet and vinyl flooring supply installation?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Browning.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Mr. Browning, you pulled this one as well?
I did. Thank you, Chair. Yes, over a million dollars for our carpets and our vinyl. That has to be brought forward just for the simple, for the smallest of reasons. First on my list would that folks would, in the business, would be aware and perhaps hadn't participated in the past, would get involved, and then we, we could rebid this. I'm always open to rebid. I don't like big, general, round number things. There's a lot of money that's, that, that, that can just go, you know, can just fit into it. I would never do this in private business, have a general amount. And the idea of renewing a bid without discussion, I don't mind renewing it if that's what the board thinks, but I would certainly like to see some discussion and at least tell the community that this is coming forward, and it's a million and a half dollars. That is an enormous sum. We can always do better. Bids are great. I want to, I don't like to renew an O-bid. I'd like to, I'd like to grind it out in the present time and, and perhaps get more value for our dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Since we are discussing this item, I, I will say that certainly having seven million square feet in air-conditioned space within Marion County Public Schools, we're going to spend a lot of money on paint, on carpet, on flooring. And if any one of us as board members has any recommendations or suggestions or wants to learn the process more, or would like to just sit with that department and look at these bids, or look at them in real time, or walk the floors and see what needs to be done, understanding the, the value of what we're trying to provide for our students in their classrooms, students and staff in the classrooms, I'm certain that Ms. Dobbins and everyone on her team would be willing to entertain any questions that any board member has at any given time about our processes and/or products that we're purchasing for the betterment of our student classrooms. I'm ready to vote.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve renewed bid 3872AH food service cafeteria, small wares, and small equipment term contract?
Motion to approve?
Motion by Vice Chair, seconded by Ms. Thor. Mr. Browning, pull this one?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yes, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, well over the government standard. The idea of small stuff, once it gets into big dollars, it's not small stuff to me anymore. It's a little bit of a pun, but let me just say that when it's this big, again, it should not be renewed. I don't, I don't have any problem with anybody going down and walking the floors or using some of this equipment. I, I don't know. I don't think that's necessary. But I don't think we should be renewing bids in the, in the current climate. I don't think we should be renewing. I think we should be grinding it out as, as tough as we can, negotiating, and two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Wow. I just want the public asked me to give my two cents worth as a representing District Two. I believe in bids. I believe in grinding it out. I believe in reducing the cost and increasing the value. And I, I know we try, but if you don't bid, it's not going to happen. If you just, if you just keep on going, and then there's no discussion, wow. That's, that's potentially you could have, you could have problems. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. May I have a motion to approve school bell times for the 2022-2023 fiscal year?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Browning.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair. Mr. Browning, you pulled this one as well for discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Yeah, okay. So here we are. We're about to start the new year, and the public, we want to get to school on time. We are making changes. We are making some scheduling changes. The superintendent has worked in this. Buses, they've adjusted, adjusted timetables. We want to do our duty and get a child in front of the teacher as soon as possible every single day. So everybody, keep your eyes open, community, keep your eyes open. Everybody's looking forward to this new year. There are going to be changes. So make sure that you become aware of them. I know we'll have some notifications going out. Watch for them. And let's start, let's start talking about day one and make it, it's a great opportunity, make it as productive a process of education as we possibly can for our students. Forty-four thousand students. Wow. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye. Posts have the same sign. Pass unanimously. The following administrative briefing and work sessions and special work sessions are scheduled on the following dates, July 21, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the student progression plan. Administrative briefing and work session scheduled for August 4, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. Currently, there is no topics. Special work session scheduled for August 11, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the special work session is to discuss the budget and general fund. Administrative briefing and work session scheduled for August 18, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the work session is to discuss the five-year district facility plan. Special work session scheduled for August 25, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. The purpose of the special work session is to discuss the continuation of the budget if needed. All right. Ms. Martinez-Lopez, any?
No, sir. Thank you.
Tony Powers?
Just want to verify with the superintendent, with Ms. Alina, that we've got everything that we need, that I made it clear what we're doing with the NIOLO policies and those edits for record-keeping purposes.
Yes.
Is that all good?
I'll pick them up, and I'll send them to you before we actually.
Okay, excellent. And other than that, I have said enough tonight. Thank you very much.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Just a few brief items. I am pleased to share, if you are not already aware, we implemented a new opportunity of learning for our students this year. Kindergarten kickstart is underway this week. And so at our elementary schools, we have welcomed our incoming kindergartners with an opportunity for learning each day, which is really exciting to get them ready for learning in kindergarten. We have several hundred students participating, so I'm really excited about that. You're probably also aware and have seen in the media, our hometown Hiring Career Fair, July 19th, in various locations. While we had a very successful event in the past few months at the World Equestrian Center, this is being held throughout our district and our county. So we are looking forward to hiring folks that want to be part of our amazing team. And last but not least, I want to thank you for tonight. You, as a board, approved grant applications that support critical needs. They support, for example, the Title II dollars, which is specifically designed for professional learning. And what that does is allows our staff an opportunity to be well-informed and prepared to teach the new benchmarks. But it also provides training and opportunity for collaboration around things that we've talked about recently here at the board meetings and in our work sessions in creating a diverse and equitable workforce and a learning environment. So thank you for your support of our application for those needed dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Browning?
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you. Yes, the, it, it's an exciting time, I think, with, mentioned earlier, we have over 20, and I, I believe 25 major school district reforms, improvements, not the least of which are, are Senator Backsley and, and Representative Harding's 5117, I believe. The, the excitement of reform, for me, it's like painting your house. It's like getting rid of rot. It's like getting rid of problems. If anybody has time and you want to learn what's going on in Florida schools, just Google what the legislature has presented to the governor and take a look at it. It's unprecedented, what's been taking place. Also, we have huge market issues. We've got to pay attention, pay attention to markets. And one of the big market issues that's going to be taking place going forward is the Supreme Court's ruling on the money moves with the student. Now, the important thing about that is that we now have to compete harder in an open market for those dollars and for those students that represent those dollars. So just, just be aware that, like normal free enterprise, the dollar, the money will follow the child. And that's, that's really a great thing, and I think we're best suited, best able to accomplish, win that competition for those students. We just have to do it. And we really have got to promote our teachers. Our teachers are the key, and I don't think anybody should ever be paid more than a teacher. Nobody ever helped me as much as my teachers, as I was coming along. It's just the way it is. And then finally, we touched on this earlier, due process. I would like to see, if we have it, for every discipline official, I would like to, to teach balance and have an education official, like catch the students doing something right. We have most of the students doing something right. And I think it'll provide a contrast and a very exciting opportunity to teach what happens in real life in our institution. And that is, if you're going to get written up, I want to see some people get written up for doing the job correctly. And I want to see, I, I want to advocate the idea of an educational official, education official, that isn't a, that can, that can counterbalance matter, antimatter. We've got the discipline official. I want to see the other one, because I want to see everybody. When I say I want to see, I'm just get excited about the idea of fairness, decency, and the process of having, opening up our schools as a huge opportunity for students and not a situation where they have to kind of keep their head down and make sure that they don't insult anybody. Their active growth, their learning, their pushing arguments is, it's in our tradition. It's very exciting. It's a, it's an opportunity for a student to really learn all they can in the process. I don't believe that we have any, I saw this come back from the recent convention, the outcome idea. I don't believe we have any control on outcomes, because that's after the race is run. But I, we have enormous power and control under, over the educational process in real time. Now, I see a huge distinction between that educational process and focusing on something off in the future that we don't really, if a student ends up in prison, I just can't abide the idea that we had anything to do with a conduit from third grade to a prison, for example. I, I believe that we have a sacred duty to educate. We, everybody in this room right now got a fine education, and I want to see us deliver that. And I want to do everything I can to see that that takes place. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Thor?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Dr. Gullett, for your vision and your foresight and your focus on immediate results, short-term results, long-term results, medium-term results. The kindergarten kickstart is just a great example of that. I was talking to a kindergarten teacher from Legacy, and he said he had nine kids show up. And what that tells me is that there's going to be nine kids that are going to be much more prepared than they would have been otherwise. And, you know, the, really and truly, the, the best way to know exactly what's going on at our schools is, is to visit them and, and see it for yourself. Someone very wise said to me one time, you know, it's easy to just talk about it, but living it brings it to life. And you have to go look. And I'm always so, so gratified by seeing personally the, what's happening in our schools. And I think about things like, all of us are education officials. Every single one of us. It doesn't matter if you're pushing a broom or grinding data. We're, we're all education officials. And, you know, anyone that visits schools knows that we have so many proactive, positive programs. You know, I've said from time to time, it's, it just becomes one of those things where someone decided to give it a title and a name, but it's what good teaching and, and good support has just always been. And one of those examples would be just simple things like Student of the Week, you know, Most Improved. You know, the, the great teachers just have that down, because in the end, we really want to see kids come out and, and be ready to do whatever it is that they want to do and, and hopefully stay out of jail as, as Board Member Browning alluded to, you know. In my mind, that's what we do for a living. And, and what I'm seeing, and what I'm so grateful for after so many years in the system, is that we have this really solid budding relationship being built with, with the community and, and the transparency and the round tables and the outreach. And I couldn't be more grateful, because, you know, when you put your heart and soul into something for so many years, and, and at some points, it, it can feel incredibly challenging, but I'm so glad that I stuck it out. But I'm so glad that I stuck it out, because I couldn't be more excited for the start of this coming school year. You know, I know that it's going to be really easy to compare it to the start of last school year, and hopefully it's going to be a huge contrast in so many ways. And all of us that have experienced one and are about to experience the other know exactly what I'm talking about. And I just wanted to thank you for your leadership. I wanted to thank everyone that is involved in our schools that is making the effort to truly be involved. You just have my gratitude, and I could not be more excited for the coming school year. So let's go. Thank you.
Vice Chair Campbell. Thank you, Chair. I just had a couple of things. First of all, I am grateful that we just approved this big policy manual. It has been a long time coming, and those of you who had watched us painstakingly through it with all of the tabs and just going literally policy by policy, I'm grateful. And I also want to publicly thank Terry Brown, Attorney Powers Paralegal, who painstakingly assisted us in the process. Additionally, obviously Attorney Powers as well. But Terry Brown is one of those folks that often is behind the scenes, and she did an awful lot of work to ensure that we had this where it needed to be. So I'm so grateful for that. I also am looking forward to upcoming meetings that we have, where we'll be receiving the new budget and be able to discuss the budget, as well as the code of student conduct that Attorney Powers has identified will become policy when we approve it. Again, constitutionally, the school board's roles are policy and budget. So what you see in the summer and what we've just done actually is the perfect example of what the school board purpose is constitutionally in the state of Florida. Also, I wanted to mention that last evening, I sat in on the City of Ocala's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting that lasted until after 10:00 p.m. A couple of the projects that were discussed will have school impacts. There were folks in the audience that were asking questions about school impact, and so I was grateful to be there, to be able to discuss that. I'm not certain what the city council will do on some of them. Again, this is just the Planning and Zoning Commission. But I did want to almost alert the school board that there is conversation about some additional build-out at Heath Brook. That was already approved. That PD was already... Planned Development was already approved more than two decades ago. And so as they continue to add potentially apartment complexes and things in that Heath Brook property, that is going to continue to add stress on our specifically Southwest Ocala schools. So I know that the school district is currently looking at what we're going to do to impact this significant localized overcrowding that we have in some of our schools. And being able to share those real-time numbers with the audience was helpful. I appreciate the opportunity to represent this board in those meetings and to be able to share that accurate data, so that when comments are made that that school isn't overcrowded, then I can actually say, well, here is our current enrollment compared to our FISH report. And then when additionally, questions came up about some of the enrollment in some of our northern schools, they were thinking that we were overcrowded, and I was also able to share that information. So I just appreciate that opportunity. I know there will be continued discussion. One of the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission did ask me last night, "Do you think impact fees would help?" And I said, "That's not a conversation for this particular meeting." So we'll, I'm certain, be having additional conversations. And I'm also grateful to Ms. Throer for serving on the interlocal agreement committee to be talking about those things. Additionally, I wanted to mention a shout-out to the team and area superintendents and all that we talked to quite a bit this week. I know that we had several administrative personnel decisions that were kind of late in the midnight hour, coming up with some of those things. But I expressed to them, you know, last night on the phone, how grateful I was to them and how interesting this is, walking through this during this school year and during this time. Each one of the moves that we approved this evening was purposeful and it was intentional. And in previous years, those who've been around in the district for a long time, me just as an outsider watching it happen, some of the moves that have happened, the almost fruit basket turnover that have happened year after year in the district, principals, assistant principals, et cetera, those kinds of things happened for many, many years. And kind of this fear culture was resonating throughout the district. "I don't know where I'm going to be. I don't know how long I'm going to be there." And I'm grateful that this team is not looking at administrative moves that way, that what has been happening and what did happen even this evening was purposeful and intentional, sometimes required, sometimes requested by specific individuals looking for a new opportunity. I mean, all of the moves that we've made and approved have been purposeful and intentional, and I'm just grateful to the team and to Dr. Gullett for ensuring that that is how we're looking at administrative moves with this administration, and I'm grateful to that. Also, I wanted to mention, obviously, school grades have come out. Thank you to everyone in the district who worked so hard. We had a lot of gains in a lot of areas, and we certainly have identified some challenge areas as well. We know what those are, and we're working to address them and will work to address them, and that's what this upcoming school year will be all about. There are 16 C districts in the state, and as the press release stated, we are one of them, but we are one only by one point. We're one point away from a B. And I know that the district is currently appealing that, because we do have one school grade that is incomplete, and until we know what that school grade is, it's potential that our district will actually move to a B district where we have been before. But we learned a few years ago, or I learned a year or so ago at a Florida School Board Association meeting, that we as school board members are either responsible for that school grade and that district grade, or we allowed them to happen. And so being the first full school year as a school board member, I own it, and we're going to own it. And we're going to own the increases that we've seen, and we're also going to own the challenges that we've seen. And whatever we need to do to work, to improve any areas, and whatever we can do to enhance and work, I don't want to be speaking for my fellow board members, but I know that we all understand our role and how important it is. I also want to stress a couple of final points here. Some things that I've heard this evening, we each as board members have our own unique set of skill sets. We are our own unique subject matter experts, I would say. And so I'm grateful for the uniqueness that each one of us has brought to the board, frankly. I know whenever there's a law enforcement issue, that Chair Cummings is going to definitely be able to speak to that. I know that whenever it's horses, or if it's something to do with exceptional student education, I know that Ms. Throer certainly is... And transportation, I mean, she's taken that on as challenges that she has addressed here. And I've heard a lot tonight about what appears to be board member expertise in bidding and sharpening pencils and helping us get the best products for the dollars that we can get. Those are not my specific skill sets, I'll admit. I mean, my specific skill sets, I have knowledge in communication and public relations. I've worked closely with human resources and recruiting, and those are... I've taught at the collegiate level. Those are things that are my unique skill sets, and I can personally say that folks in those departments I have personal relationships with, that I've stressed repeatedly, "Use my brain anytime you need to." And those in the audience who represent those departments know, I've said often, "Use my brain." It's okay to bounce ideas off of me, because that's a skill set that I have, that I'm willing to share and give that back to the district and to staff that might need that at any given time. So I just want to express that as a board member, that I'm grateful for the makeup of those of us that sit here, but I also am grateful for the opportunity to use my skill set to an advantage to those within the district and the areas that I share. Specific areas that I've focused on through the past 19 months have been policies, budgeting, and communication efforts within the district. Those are three areas that I focused on very heavily, but none of that says student achievement or student outcomes. Granted, all of the policy, all of the budget, all of that ties back into it, but it doesn't actually say student outcomes or student achievement. And as I said just the other day in another public meeting that we held, that's going to change now. Some of the things that have been able to be changed and implemented and being able to work on this policy manual, and all of those things have fingerprints that I'm grateful that I've been able to be a part of, but student achievement and student outcomes are where we have to focus all of our attention moving forward. And our board meetings need to be focused in that way as well. So I'm saying again publicly, all of the focus that I've had previously is going to be shifting, and my involvement in schools will be a lot more visible than it has been because of the efforts that I had put forth previously and what I'm focusing on moving forward. And thank you to Ms. Throer for saying that, because the best way to see what we're doing in our district is to see it firsthand in our schools. And speaking of that, finally, summer school ends this week. So to all of those students and staff that have been working so diligently, in summer school, it ends tomorrow. And thank you for all of the effort that you've put in to ensure that students could get ahead or students were able to catch up. It's meaningful, it's purposeful, and we're grateful for all of that work. Additionally, those who've taken classes on Marion Virtual, they end the week of July 25th. Some of those have been trying to excel, and some of those have been trying to catch up. And obviously, as Dr. Gullett has expressed, that we have welcomed new learners or young learners this week for that kindergarten kickstart, which is such a great way to get our kids prepared, our students prepared, for the upcoming school year. And like Ms. Throer, I am so excited for what we have that lies ahead, and I'm grateful to be a part of the move and the effort that we are doing in Marion County Public Schools to ensure that every student succeeds. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Member Throer, Board Member Browning, for your comments as well. Very interesting meeting tonight. Heard a lot of stuff. We talked about policy and all those types of things. I think I said a few weeks ago, and Ms. Campbell just re-entered it, about student outcome. Our board has to be focused on student outcomes. I truly believe that things that start at the top, if it starts at the top, if that's the focus of the top, then everything that's beneath it flows that way. So if the board focuses on student outcomes, the superintendent's focuses on student outcome, the area superintendent's, the chief academic officer, the chief financial officer, Safe Schools, everybody is going to be about student outcome. And when everybody is focused on the same thing, we can only get the right outcome, which is student outcomes. So I'm more focused on student outcomes and making sure that we do those things that are necessary to get the appropriate student outcomes. We got our grades last week, and I'm still expecting us to get the B. I truly am expecting us to get the B. I believe that once all the smoke clears, we will be a B district. I believe that. I got the information about some of the changes that we had to do, administrative changes that we did, and they were purposeful and intentful and intentional. So we have to do those things. And one of the things that I stressed to those that were talking to me, that we got to hurry up and get the dust to settle, because we're 30 days, less than 30 days away from school starting. So we have to have the dust settling, so that these administrators can be where they need to be and start preparing for these kids to come back to school. I'm looking forward to the start of a new school year, because I see the beginning of the school year as new potential, a new journey into where we're going. I don't see it as a setback, or I see it as a forward movement, and we're going somewhere. As we're putting people in places, as people are getting in schools, as the kinks are getting worked out, I expect that we won't be in the same situation that we're in right now, where we're looking for a half a point. I expect that we'll be where we need to be and know that we're there without a doubt. So progress is sometimes slow, but as long as we're getting progress, I'm good with that. And I heard several things tonight about due processes and that we're almost restricting or taking away due processes. I understood Mr. Browning's concern about due process, because I'm a due process person as well. I completely understand your... His concern. But one thing I want us to be clear about is that you don't lose your rights when you get on the school campus. Your rights still go with you, and due processes are right, and we will never infringe or take upon someone's due processes. We want to make sure that we're educating kids and treating our staff right, all of our staff. So it's been an interesting night, very interesting night, and a lot of things have gone forward. So I'm looking forward to school starting August 10th. August 10th, school is going to be starting, so parents, families, community, get ready, get ready. The buses will be on the road soon. I know we have these hiring events coming up. I'm hoping that folk will go out to these hiring events and seriously consider working for Marion County Public School System. We have a lot of different areas where people can work in the district. So we are having them across the county. So if you're listening to us, please go. If you've got relatives or friends or neighbors or whoever that are looking for employment, it's a great possibility that they could become employed with the Marion County Public School System in some capacity. Just show up and see where you qualify and what skill set that you have. And then I want to close by my comments with, thank you, Ms. Campbell, Vice Chair Campbell, for acknowledging that we are a board that's strong because of our diversities. We're stronger because we're not all the same, and we don't all think the same way. And we're stronger because we all do bring our own different skill sets to this board and to the community. I think that's called balance, or checks and balances. So I appreciate each one of the board members for what they bring to the board, and I'm sure the community appreciates it as well. And we're looking forward to starting a new school year with some new safety protocols. We're glad the sheriff was able to come and bring Alby with him, and it was unique to see the dog and what other tool that we have to make schools safe. Because if the environment is not safe, then it's difficult for education to happen. So we thank the sheriff for that. And then thank you to all of our staff members that are here tonight. You guys are putting in, burning that oil, that extra oil. So let me help you get out of here. Let me help you get out of here, okay? I wish to acknowledge that board members have received alternative placements list for students through May 31st, 2022. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a time or request to speak?
No, Chair. No, sir.
Okay. And we don't have any tonight.
No, sir. We have no expulsion, just alternative placements.
We have none. So guess what, guys? There's no further business. Meeting is adjourned at 7:38 p.m. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, please.
Give me a motion, Dan.
I'll second it.
Motion by Vice Chair, seconded by Ms. Throer. Meeting adjourned at 7:38 p.m.